Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of April 22, 2024 to order. All those that are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the agenda as it is written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you have a...
We have to make a motion before we vote on it.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move for the adoption of the agenda.
Is there a second? Second? Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Jordan, are there any communications this evening? Do we have any?
No, Mr. Chair.
He said no.
No? Okay. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Try your... Any comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one comment that's been submitted by Bobby Walton of Davison, and the topic is Board Policy and Legal Advice.
Okay. In accordance with Section 1640 of the meeting procedure, Board Policy states that the board chairperson shall invite the public to address the board. All citizens who wish to address the board or who wish to communicate with the board in writing shall identify themselves and/or group they represent if any. They must also state their reason for addressing the board. Citizens addressing the board shall be limited to five minutes in making their remarks unless the time is increased or decreased by consent of the board. A brief supporting the remarks made by the citizen may be submitted to the board for its consideration. Bobby Walton?
Good evening. Thank you for taking my comments. You may wonder why I persist in speaking to you about your management practices. The public must be represented. It's about trust. I can't read your minds, but I can look at what you do and predict what you're doing and where you're going. You may think it's no big deal that your chairman has been successful in thumbing his nose at the rules and the laws that govern the administration of Mott Community College. He has tried to shut me up more than once. I have pointed out the ways your chair has violated the Open Meetings Act to claim the gavel and to bring his own personal attorney to serve as the board attorney. This has been reported to the Michigan Attorney General. Your chair has begun asking his attorney to work on setting policy when amending your bylaws. I witnessed this last Friday when I attended the meeting of the Board Policy Committee. It is very obvious. The counselor has become the eighth member of the board, an unelected member. Setting policy is the responsibility of the board. You are elected officials. Your lawyer is your counselor. Counselors give legal advice; they do not set policy. In giving your attorney the responsibility of setting policy, you are corrupting the work of the board. What kind of example is that for the students at this college? We have rules about cheating in class. Your chairman cheats. I won't stop pointing that out. The chair's campaign to replace a good attorney with one who would go beyond giving legal advice to setting policy is wrong. Your attorney knows this. The board is accountable for setting policy; your lawyer is not, and it is wrong to give him that responsibility and that power. Your chair tried over several months to get Mr. Brickley installed as your board attorney. He succeeded in cheating, spending taxpayer money to hire someone to represent him, not the board and not the college. I repeat this because I don't want you to forget what you have done. I don't want the voters to forget what you have done. Mr. Chair, you have corrupted the honesty of the Board of Trustees. You have violated the trust of the community. You must be removed from office. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Are there any other...
Mr. Chair, that concludes public comment. That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Are there any special presentations this evening, Madam President?
There are no special presentations.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of March 25, 2024?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? Are there any corrections? Was there a second? Yes, yes. Okay. Nothing to be corrected or changed? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Aye. All those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. The meeting of April 5, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes for the special meeting? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 5, 2024? Got a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Aye, sue. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Informational reports? Finance report? Mr. Swanson?
There was no meeting held.
Personnel?
There was no meeting.
Board policy? Yes, we had a meeting. The policies have been reworked and brought forward. There is another item that we need to share with you so that the board can take it for its consideration for later on. We discussed this the other day at the meeting. We have not brought it forward as an agenda item yet for policy, but we would like to have each trustee's input on this. This is thought for the future when we bring this forward. That concludes the goals and objectives, or excuse me, the Board Policy Report. Goals and objectives report? Daley Freeman or Reyes?
Trying to process this. No meeting took place.
No meeting. Okay. Items. The treasurer's report? Madam President?
No questions have come forward about the treasurer's report.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report, 1.95? Yes, Mr. Reyes.
See the treasurer's report for March 2024?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Item 1.96. Mechanical and Automated Design Tech (AAS) resolution. Is there a resolution for this new program?
Yeah, we have the resolution. You looking for a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion or questions regarding this? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. The motion has passed. Amendment to Board Policy 4410. Purchasing first reading. Are there any questions regarding this? Motion to accept this for the first reading? It's not necessary. Okay. 1.98. Amendment to Board Policy 5008. Board Employee Communication, First Reading. Are there any questions? Seeing none, these will be brought forth at the next meeting for approval or not. Unfinished business. Item 1.86. Amendment to Board Policy 3431. Audit, Second Reading. Are there any questions? Yes, Madam President?
Mr. Chair, do you have the information that Mr. Freeman...
Mr. Chair, do you have the information that Mr. Freeman asked for?
What did Mr. Freeman ask for? Do you remember?
Yes, Mr. Freeman asked for the board, or the bond attorney, to review it and give information about it, and that was passed out to the, your committee to be discussed at this meeting.
Did you put it in the packet for the board members, Jordan? This is from Eric McGothlin. He is from Dickinson Rights Law Firm. "I have reviewed the proposed change, and I am left wondering what prompted this change. The potential for causing concern for a rating agency lies in whether and to what extent the policy change may interfere with the college's normal management and existing policies for addressing financial or other budget irregularities. The change also may prompt questions as to whether there have been financial or other budget irregularities, the circumstances given to rise such allegations, if any, the manner in which these allegations have been addressed and by whom, the rationale, background for making the changes, and why the portions of the policy may or not be adequate to addressing such allegations, particularly to policy statement nine." Any questions? Mr. Freeman?
As we discussed before, we talked about policy changes affecting our bond rating, and so in fact, it is, it kind of looks like to, when we're doing a policy change, to be reactive to a financial irregularity. That then calls into question the college and our financial management practices. I'm assuming that this is accurate then, based on this correspondence?
I'm trying to get Larry over here. Mr. Freeman was trying to make sure he was reading accurately what our bond attorney has said.
Yeah, so I think as you can read, the first statement I think he made is why was this change made, right? And that would make potentially anybody reading this from outside question that. So that was his concern. Although he says this one by himself may not, you know, cause a ratings change, but the totality of all changes being considered are also a concern that he has, and he reiterated that as well.
And I think he said that statement nine really took care of statement thirteen.
Right. He did address that as well. Statement nine, which speaks about the employees and the hotline, anonymous being able to any sort of, if there's a concern about any sort of financial irregularity, there is a provision already in the bylaws for that.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Larry. Do we have a motion for one point eight six? To accept it with the changes?
Make that motion.
You're making the motion for item one point eight six? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Reyes?
I'm speaking out against the change. Based on, it appears that we're just making a change to make a change. There's no allegations of financial or other budget irregularities. When we have audits, which have all come back clean, the auditor reaches out to us and asks us as board members, and there's a mechanism by which employees can make those assertions if they're suspected. So I don't see that number thirteen is at all necessary. And given that our advice is questions whether or not it should be made, and I am left wondering what prompted this change. That statement right there is something that I believe anybody from an outside agency reading this would be left with that same question, and we don't have any of that, so I just don't see that thirteen is necessary. So I'm speaking out against the motion.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
I do want Jason Wilson, the Vice President, to speak on what he brought to the committee from an accreditation standpoint.
To the board? One moment, please. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thank you. We also inquired about whether or not the cascade effect of our credit rating. Wondered about the cascade effect of that and really impact of that kind of decision. In talking with my colleagues at the National Convention, it was brought to my attention that if the college is seen or under any additional monitoring or other reviews, that may impact the college's ability to qualify for additional funding streams, such as the many grants that the college has been awarded in the last six months around adult learners and such. So I brought that to committee to say that it's not just about the credit rating. That has a cascading effect on the ability of the college to qualify for competitive grants and other funding streams.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Mr. Freeman?
At this point, you know, I told you so doesn't give me any pleasure, like when I have to say that, and I just feel like at this point, like I'm not arguing anymore. I think everyone has their minds made up about how they want to do things, whether it's to the detriment of the college or not. You're going to vote the way you're going to vote, and it'll be the I told you so moment where our credit rating goes down, people start to like look at these policy changes, which honestly, like I know for a fact internally that these are like policy changes that are just being made to make changes, so there's nothing behind them. So, but unfortunately, from the outside, it's the questions of why that's being done. So the things we do today, the ripple effects, will affect us all in the future. It's everyone vote the way you want. I'm, you know, I just think that we are spending more time on stuff that really doesn't matter versus the actual work that we're supposed to be doing, you know, like let's say in committee meetings, you know, other than policy, you know, we have people on vacation or whatnot, but we're down a person on our board, so we can't effectively meet. It's harder, like if one person can't show, generally now it's just not a meeting. We have a lack of attendance from certain board members who, they're not there, and so we're supposed to be doing the work. We don't appear to be doing the work, and then it's these meetings where we're changing stuff which really has no bearing on the operations of the college. We lose our credit rating, it's not my fault. I'm voting against this. You guys do what you want. I'm tired.
Other questions? Any other comments? Roll call vote. Mr. Reyes? No. Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion has passed for the changes to policy. Moving on. President's Report. Civil operating employee and student success.
I'm going to ask if Mr. Wayhill and Ms. Nowak will please come forward.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Chair, trustees. I had the good fortune of being at the American Association of Community Colleges Conference in Louisville a couple of weekends ago with Dr. Beverly and others from the college. And as you know, these conferences include evening receptions that national organizations put on and invite you to so you can meet people and get to know them a little bit better. We went to a reception for Campus Works, which is a national entity that provides support services for community colleges in different areas, and as we entered, we were allowed to get a ticket, a raffle ticket with a number on it, and Dr. Beverly had signed us up in advance. There were three or four of us, I think, that were signed up for that, and, you know, we got to be there in case we win. And so we were there, and they drew four winners of twenty-five hundred dollars each, four different community colleges, and I won twenty-five hundred dollars for Mott College for our students. So add that to the twenty-one million that we've raised since July first of last year. So that's the picture, probably seven minutes after they announced it, and it was a joyous time. And they wanted to have small talk, but Dr. Beverly kept saying, where's the real check? Where's the real check? Send it to us. So that's the first item of excellence at the college and employee recognition. I think I've got one more. So this gentleman is Bob Campbell. Bob is seated behind me. You want to stand up, Bob, or come forward? Come on up and pull it. Come on up. So Bob Campbell has been our marketing and communications manager in my office of institutional advancement since October, November of two thousand and twenty-two, and he does a lot of things out in the community, like a lot of Mott employees on boards and commissions and councils and nonprofit and volunteer activities. One of those is the Greater Flint African American Sports Hall of Fame, which has been around since nineteen eighty-three, and its mission is to categorize or catalog the history and recognize the history of African Americans in sports in this area, and all the way from professional sports down to sandlot sports and everything in between. Bob is on the board of directors for this organization, and at their annual induction ceremony, where they induct new athletes, they honored Bob as their outstanding board member of the year. So give him a round of applause.
Thank you. Being recognized by the hall was really a surprise, really an honor. You know, growing up in Flint, I've had the opportunity to see a number of tremendous athletes and play against a few of them. I rode the bench a lot, so I'll be honest, but it gave me a good, a good seat to see a number of terrific athletes in action. And being a part of the board for, what'd I say, the last year and a half or so has really been a real honor, and being honored by the board on March twenty-fourth was quite a surprise for anyone who was there. So again, thank you for this recognition.
As part of the sixteenth annual employee appreciation event held on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, six employees were introduced and recognized as nominees for the two thousand and twenty-four Outstanding Faculty and Staff Award. This year's nominees were Robert Bernard, Jennifer Fillion, these are her faculty, from Arts and Sciences, Valerie Sartor from Health and Human Services, and their pictures are up there on the right. And the staff nominees were Dr. Madonna Jackson from Technology, Sharonda Love-Wilson from Student Academic Success, and Daryl Petway from Workforce and Economic Development. Dr. Beverly presented this year's awards to the faculty recipient, Professor Robert Bernard, and the staff recipient, Dr. Madonna Jackson, and I think they're both here. Come on up. I'll just bend a little bit. Actually, just hold it like this. So I can read to you what has been said. I'll start over here with Professor Bernard. Robert began his career at Mott in the winter of two thousand and five as a part-time instructor in information technology, and was quickly hired into a full-time teaching position in the fall of two thousand and five. In addition to teaching full-time, he became coordinator of Communications Technology in two thousand and eight. These are some of the comments from the nominations submitted for Robert. As one of Robert's colleagues wrote, "I wanted to bring attention to Robert's outstanding commitment and exceptional support he provides to the Technology Division. Robert is proactive and goes above and beyond to ensure the success of the division. It's truly a pleasure to work alongside someone who brings such enthusiasm and professionalism to their work." One of Robert's students submitted, "Mr. Bernard was positive, motivating, and not only believed in me, but also supported and spoke positively of other professors. When I was struggling in classes not taught by Mr. Bernard, his friendly, positive demeanor made it easier for me to work with and trust my other professor's abilities. When I was on a work-study-job interview, Mr. Bernard took the time to learn about my cultural and religious differences, and he knew in advance that I wasn't able to shake his hand. He made me feel respected and welcomed. Since that day, I have held that view as a student at Mott." And here's what was said about Dr. Madonna Jackson. Madonna was hired as a disadvantaged and limited English proficiency services coordinator in October twenty-two thousand and seven. She continued her work in disability services until taking the position as interim dean of technology in August of two thousand and nineteen. In August of two thousand and twenty, Madonna returned to student services as the lead student success coach. In November two thousand and twenty-two, Madonna returned to technology as the dean once again. Here is what Madonna's colleagues had to say in her nomination for this award. "Dr. Madonna Jackson embodies excellence in academia and compassionate leadership. With a career focused in the pursuit of knowledge and innovation, Dr. Jackson brings a wealth of expertise and insight to our institution, enriching both our faculty and students alike. Her dedication to fostering a nurturing and inclusive environment reflects her caring personality, as she consistently goes above and beyond to support the success and well-being of all those within our community. Madonna goes above and beyond in building programs and bridges for students to advance their academic endeavors to achieve their career goals. She listens to faculty to assist with innovative ideas to serve the interests of our students. Madonna is an amazing team player who breaks down silos and brings various groups together to provide opportunities for students they wouldn't have elsewhere. Madonna, always, capitals, always thinks from a student perspective and makes decisions based strictly on student success, and if all of us do the same thing, Mott Community College can't go wrong." Please congratulate Robert Bernard and Dr. Madonna Jackson as the two thousand and twenty-four Outstanding Faculty and Staff Award recipients." Thank you to everybody who's here and allowing us to be here and share in these amazing awards that have been bestowed upon us. I made Rob come because I told him he needed to be here, so I'm not going to beg him to speak. He's not one to take the limelight, so thanks for coming out to support. The college has been fantastic to me. I've had a long and fulfilling career here. I want to thank all of the administration here for helping me go through my journey to become the leader that I have become today. I couldn't have done it without. I'm a Mott graduate myself, so to come back and be able to help students, all students,
all students, but I have a soft spot for first-generation students. I'm a first-generation student. My parents didn't go to college, and they still ask me why I can be called doctor, but I can't write a prescription, so. I want to thank you all for being here. Thank you for the award. And Rob, are you sure you don't want to say anything?
Thank you.
Jason Wilson will give enrollment. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, ABP.
Okay, we have several new hires to introduce to the board today. And again, the credit goes to the HR Talent Team, April Hubert, Rebecca Martz, and Shenyari Bird, along with the hiring managers and the selection committees that make this happen. So we have Tanya Sims, Lead Social Worker in Student Academic Success, started April 15th. Tanya has her master's degree in social work from Michigan State University and is fully licensed from the state of Michigan. She has more than 20 years' experience as a social worker in healthcare and K-12 settings, second half public schools, Michigan State University, and she was a supervisor at Great Lakes Bay Health Center. Next, we have Crystal Quaterer, Office Assistant to and Health and Human Services and Student Academic Success. She also started April 15th. She has a bachelor's degree in business communications from U of M Flint and 12 years' experience providing administrative support and customer service at U of M Flint. Next, we have Heather Harrison. She's the Associate Administrator, Literacy and Partnership Services, part of Workforce and Economic Development. She too started April 15th. She has several years designing youth literacy programs and cultivating rich partnerships across Genesee County. She has her master's in library and information science, and she worked at Genesee District Library for a year and a half, half as a youth services librarian. We have Justin Madden. He's a custodian, started April 1st in Maintenance and Operations. He's a graduate from Montrose High School, and he's currently a Mott student in the HVAC program. Previously, he worked at Maplewood's Manor in Maintenance. We have Craig Gould, Custodian, Maintenance and Operations, also started April 1st. Craig has an associate's degree from Baker College and eight years' custodial experience, before that experience working as an assembly technician assembling and inspecting parts. And last, we have Felicia Alston, Custodian, Maintenance and Operations, started April 15th, and she's a graduate of Central High School, and she worked as a custodian prior to working in sales. And that concludes the new hire introductions.
Okay, thank you. The April enrollment report is as follows. Just a reminder, we start at summer and fall enrollment on April 1st. So as you can see, we've gotten off to a very strong start. Our summer numbers, 2441, this was as of last week, summer 2441 head count, that's 8.4% past what we were doing in the budget year. And then 21,271 contact hours is a 6.7 increase in comparison to the year that we're budgeting against. I'll explain what that means in a second. Fall, we're also up very, very strong, 1821 head count, that's a 16.4% increase. And then 18708.5 is a 13.8% increase from the year that we're tracking against. The enrollment huddle team, which is very successful, has been successful, a successful strategy. This is the cross interdisciplinary team that looks at all facets of enrollment, has begun meeting again. I referenced, with the numbers, our comparison year. So we're looking at two benchmarks through this enrollment cycle. First, we're looking at our comparison to the year that we budgeted against, which is not last year, but the year prior to, at the end of that year. We recognize that last year was a very strong year from an enrollment standpoint, but the year prior to that was not that strong. So rather than just go flat year to year, we're continuing to kind of analyze enrollment trends, definitely in reference to budget. So we're comparing ourselves in a baseline manner to the previous year's enrollment goals. So that's the number, excuse me, that's the number that we'll be monitoring in terms of reporting out. But we want to see how we compare year to year with the surge that we had last year, and we're calling that our stretch goal. So we're actually monitoring our performance against last year's surge and against the budget year. We're performing well against the stretch numbers so far, but that's just something that we're keeping an eye on for internal planning purposes. And our focus has been really on current students, returning students, guest students that make up a big portion of the summer enrollment, and then bringing over our workforce education completers, who we know worked on hard in terms of bridging programs that are non-credit to credit, really looking to upskill talent from the non-credit area. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Okay, can I have Larry to come forward to talk about the master plan?
We haven't done the dental hygiene program yet.
And I know that... Hello?
Hello? Why don't you use mine?
Hold on. Okay, so I've asked Larry to go ahead and give an overview of our master plan and how we went about doing that, because as we talk about new buildings, we have to make sure that everybody knows about the master plan and how that has come about and how we follow it, because that's a part of our accreditation standards.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Dr. Beverly. So, next slide, please. We do have a couple of board policies that govern our master plan, and the last master plan was brought to the board back in 2021, and it was adopted. So as you can see, as the board policy 4100 speaks to the president and designated staff will develop long-range building plans and improvements, the master plan, and bring that for the board approval. This is not something we do every year, as you'll see, if you haven't had a chance to look at the slide yet. Next slide, please. It takes a considerable amount of time and input from people. So you can see, we started this back in January of 2020, I'm sorry, January of 2020, and then it culminated and finished in April of 2021. So it was over, it was 14 months of time to complete this. And the reason for that is, is that we get an engagement, you probably can't read the wording beneath, but a lot of engagement from the community, a lot of meetings, not now just internal stakeholders or the college community, but external community as well. So it takes a tremendous amount of time. IDS, Integrated Design Solutions, our architects, are the ones that did all of this for us. Next slide, you can also see that a tremendous amount of resources from the college, as far as personnel, were involved in this. And the steering committee members met, and you have, I believe you have copied the plan, you'll see it here, you'll see the pictures in there of the different planning sessions they had, time it took to develop that, to come up with the final plan. And then the final board policy I wanted to go over with you relates to the master plan is 45, or, excuse me, 4005. And just an overarching statement that the board will provide, best facilities possible with the limited, or the resources that we have, and there's three statements. Statement number one, decisions pertaining to planning, construction, renovation will be in relation to the students, faculty, staff, taxpayers, and appropriate members of administrative staff. Statement two, all major projects must be in line with the college master plan and consultation with the college architect. And then the third statement, implementation of all decisions will be carried out by the auspices of the president and designated staff. So I just wanted to give you an overview of that as you're going through and looking at different projects and considerations.
Right, and I just want to make sure everybody sees that they have the master plan. It's here for you, and I just encourage you to go through it, because it has some really good information in it. So we're going to have IDS, I believe. Are they?
I believe they're on, yeah.
Going to come here up? Oh, they've not shown up yet? Do we know when they're showing up?
Well, yeah, I think Jason had set...
Oh, Jason worked with...
Well, he would, yeah, he was, I think he was more coordinated, so I'm just going to refer to Jason as far as...
Okay, well, I guess we're running early. So we'll just move on then, and when they come, you all just stay in the mode of master plan and how this all goes with buildings. The next one, I guess, that we're going to do then is the medical legal death investigative training.
Yes, an update on the medical legal program that I presented discovery information on last month. I'm still in the process of discovery. The board chair suggested that I meet with our doctor with the college, Dr. Bush. I have talked to Dr. Bush, and we have agreed to meet next Thursday, May 2nd, at 10:00 a.m. to...
They told me to give it to you.
To discuss the program and just his thoughts on the college, and this is, again, part of the discovery process on looking at programs. That's my update. I don't know what this is.
Document from Dr. Bush on putting together the program for a certification program or the associate program. He had some very good ideas in there, which will help you move along a little quicker. And last August, when we met up in Traverse City, there is a program that the Michigan Community College Association is putting together, where community colleges can share the cost and the ability to put together programs. Private universities use this. Adrian in particular started it, where modular classes are put together so that we can cut the cost of putting together a program. This seems to have a great potential for doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, okay. Commencement, I... Mr. Chair, did you change how you wanted to do this?
No, you've been jumping around. The dental hygiene program hasn't been talked about, nor the during presentation.
No, 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 I had the question, did you, you had said you wanted to go line by line for people to sign up, you know, on that? That's what I'm asking about. Jordan was saying, you said you didn't want to do that. So I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing.
Now I know what you're talking about.
Yes.
Fellow trustees, these are the different graduation programs we have this year. And if any of you could select and volunteer for any one of these, or two or more, it would be appreciated by the different programs. Black Student Union Celebration, April 23rd. Is there anybody that can make that?
That's tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. right here, the Black Student Union celebratory event. The next is the Math and Sciences Social Science STEM Scholar Student Award, which is on Wednesday in Gorman Auditorium. Then the next day, you see, we're busy, busy, busy. The next day is the Blue Hair and Writing Awards in the VADC at 3:00 p.m. That same day, at 6 o'clock, we'll have our first dental hygiene penning ceremony. On Saturday, we'll have our second annual lavender graduation, and that is 11:30 in RTC 1301. Then May 1st, the next week, it takes us into the LERTA graduation, 11:00 a.m. here. The graduate honors reception is that same day at the whiting at 6:00. Then we'll have our respiratory therapy penning on Friday, the 3rd, at 6:00 in the RTC auditorium. You all know about the commencement, May 4th, which is Saturday at 2:00 p.m. Let's make sure that you've gotten fitted for your caps and gowns so that they fit this time. Yay! On June 18th, we'll be in our correctional facility in LaPierre, and that's June 18th at 9:00 a.m. If you want to do that, there are forms that you have to have completed by a certain date, and so if you would get with Jason to get that done, if you're going to attend, it's not something you can just decide upon, that you're going to attend it. And then our nurses penning ceremony is June 28th at Every Nation Church on Chavez, I believe it's Chavez Drive, at 5:00 p.m. So we would really like to see all of you there and hope that your schedules will allow. But the very first thing is tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. right here in the Events Center. The next thing we have here is the strategic plan. We have Julie Consulman, who's here today from Huron Studer. Raise your hand, Julie, just so they remember you. We're still working with, I believe, the chair to get the questions settled so that she can work with you to get guidance on your vision from the board. And so as soon as we get that done, she'll be able to take that area. She's already, though, started working with the community and with our in-house folks as well, to try to get their thoughts about where we should be going for a strategic plan. And the one that the chair has, keeps asking me about, dental hygiene. And so with that, you do have a, I think, a form here that's been passed out, and we just thought it was... Oh, okay. We're just having all kinds of fun here. We passed this out so that you could understand the reaccreditation that our folks just went through. I don't have the date here. Can someone tell me the date that they just went through it? I got three people here. Anyway, they just went through reaccreditation. Everything went very well with that. They are set for another visit now in 2029, which is very good. They've also gone through what we call and what we do here, a program review, and it's something that our programs, our occupational education programs are designed to find out what's going on, what do they need in order to make them successful. It has a lot of information when you go through that process. And so I'd like for you to... It has a lot of information when you go through that process, and so I'd like for you to, you know, look at that and review that because we think that the things that were brought out at the last meeting are some of the things that were already brought out when they were going through their process. You see the strengths of what has been identified that helped them to be reaccredited, and then we have our weaknesses of things that we need to look at in order to support and to help them be a better program. And then you see the opportunities here for increasing access for this community, and then the different things that are the threats, and some of those things that you all talked about are listed here as well. I want to make sure that you know that we have gone through this process. I don't know how long the process takes. I know generally, but, sure, come on. But what we do is, once we get these, we start working on prioritization with the folks that are in the program so that we can start tackling what's going to be best to help to make them better. I can't say enough about accreditation and the program accreditation. It's nothing to sneeze at. It's something that is, for all of our health science programs, very, very rigorous, and so for us to be reaccredited, it means that we're doing some great things over there. So, go ahead. How long does it take to go through the program review?
It can be, it's, gives us really an annual, you know, a 12-month process, but that's to look at the different programs that are on the, on the program review cycle. We have a five-year cycle, so our programs are reviewed through that, through that cycle. To your other question, the dental program review was March of 2023 is when that occurred. But the process itself really consists of an interview with the faculty, program chair, really getting a sense of some of the things that we noted in reference to this time. We definitely went back and did an additional SWOT analysis just to make sure that we covered everything from the review in relationship to dental, to acknowledge the trustees' concerns with that program.
So, one of the things, and I want to bring this out, you said it was March 20 of 2023. That was actually, though, when they were here, because we've worked with them through the fall to make sure that, I think we got the final word this spring.
August of '23 was when that, that letter essentially saying that we were approved without reporting
Okay.
... requirements. We received that letter on September, September 8th, and that was approved on August 10th of that same year.
Right. So, just wanted to know that we have taken your thoughts very seriously. We're going through the process of what we need to do for our accrediting standards to ensure that not just dental, but all of our programs have what they need to be successful. Are there any questions about dental and any of the things that have come out on the information that we've reviewed today? I believe, I think you could have stayed here. I'm not sure who's working with IDS, but I think they're here. So now we're going to change, we're going to go back to master plan.
We're going to the Durham presentation in response to the request from the board. The board requested that we look at the feasibility of combining programs. It's not that slide deck. You, you can just bring up the Zoom. So, we talked to our firm about that process. They went through their exercise, and they're here to share the results of your request. So Krista, I'll turn it over to you, or Mike, or...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry I'm not on video right now, but yes, I can walk through this. We did a short review of what the current Health Sciences program is, the different parts of the division, and where they currently take up building space. I can't see the presentation, has it changed? Slides?
I believe the slide, the PDF is in your packets.
Yes, I
And so
Is it showing?
It is not showing.
Okay. And I apologize for not having it in front of me, but we did look at the different buildings that the program is in. It's currently in Curtis Mott Building, Mott Memorial, Southern Lakes, and Durham.
Krista, hold on, Krista?
Yes?
Hold on one second.
Oh, yes, thank you, I can see it now.
Yeah, we, we need to see the, the PDF to follow along, we need to follow that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had it shared. I'll just need a moment, please.
Krista, I can share my screen.
Perfect, thank you, Kevin.
I, give me one second here. Can I be on this?
Yes, please.
For screen sharing, please. There we go. Is that working?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, there you go, Krista.
Thank you. Okay. So, this slide shows graphically the building floor plans, and the orange portion circled or colored is the area that's taken up by Health Sciences. So it is in the buildings that were listed, and we took the square footage of each building that's being used. So we've got 31,000 square feet in Curtis Mott, 19,000 square feet in Southern Lakes, Mott Memorial has 12,400 square feet, and Durham itself is 13,600 square feet. So that means that the total program space at Mott for the dentals, sorry, for the Health Sciences is 76,000 square feet. And then looking at the size of Durham, and, actually, if we go to the next slide, we can see that Durham itself is quite small in relation to, to the overall square feet that's needed. So from the 13,600 square feet in Durham, there's a 76,000 square feet need, and there's a deficit there of about 64,000 square feet. So moving everything that's in the program now to essentially a smaller building, this exercise shows that it wouldn't capture the square feet that you need to hold all your programs in. That was the simple exercise, and those are the findings. Are there any questions?
Does the dental program currently use?
The dental program is in Mott Memorial, and that's 12,400 square feet.
Is that the size of the building, or the square foot of their facility that they use?
Just the square foot that is used by the dental program.
It plots off to 4,700 square feet. Now let's turn our attention to the program that the doctor does with the health center that Mr. Becker works in. That's about 600 square feet.
The health center in Mott Memorial?
It's in Mott Memorial, and we have a examining rooms and facilities that take care of the student patients. That's only 600 square feet. Then we have
Mr. Chair, the
The numbers that they've given us are incorrect. There is a problem. What we're talking about is a health facility added along with the first floor. It seems that the architects were not given the explanation of what was asked by the board members, Wendy and Jeff. Therefore, her numbers and the plan that she's doing would be incorrect because she is taking all of the health science programs and attempting to put them into a small building, where she is correct with the 13,000 square foot of the Durham, adding the first floor would give another 12,000 square feet, which is adequate to take care of the programs that Wendy and Jeff had asked about. So the report isn't fulfilling what was asked by the board.
I was just going to interject that Becker's area is in the Curtis Mott Building.
Correct, and Becker's area actually has less than 600 square feet, and that's part of the health program that the board, Wendy and Jeff, had brought forth from their trip to Las Vegas that they wanted to work on. I think it would be helpful if the architects had a set down with Wendy and Jeff so that they could articulate to them what they would like to see happen, because this is taking up every healthcare plan, program that the college has, and that was never the way they articulated.
Point, point of order. So basically, you're having a conversation and articulating what you specifically want, or you're suggesting, this is not a board directive, you're speaking for us, and this is not what I understood. I mean, what I'm seeing here is basically the layout of all of our programs, how much spatially they require. They're not in one building, but basically we would have to have a building of that size to do that. So unless, I guess, if the suggestion is, is that we're going to build an entirely new building on the campus, that's a huge financial outlay, and it's something completely different. I don't understand, like, this and what's taking place during this meeting and the questioning that, you know, we're getting a update and report based on what we had asked about. I wanted to, I'm interested to know, how much space do we use right now? What is the collective size of that? Does the building have that which it doesn't appear to, unless we kick something else to the curb, I guess, but, I guess we get rid of the middle college or something, then we have plenty of space, which is ridiculous. So I don't understand this questioning and what's being suggested as an inappropriate response, or like, not giving us the information which we need to hear. This is coming from you, it's not coming from all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I will recall that Wendy and Jeff came back from Vegas, you had, were enthusiastic about this, you brought it up, it was talked about in this manner, Mr. Freeman, and, Mr. Freeman, it was their idea we're trying to work through and find out the space to make this work. And there is ample space with adding a first floor onto the Durham auditorium. So therefore, would you guys entertain an idea of meeting and talking with the architects?
First off, the thing that, when we had came back from Vegas that, that I wanted to see, that I'm looking at to do more right now, is making space for the dental hygiene clinic and move them and the dental assisting clinic in somewhere else. I wasn't necessarily saying all of these.
All of these Wendy's are everything from nursing, everything that they do is what they're talking about. When you came back from Vegas, you articulated to me that you were looking at a healthcare where the students, I think your words were one-stop shopping.
I did say that.
Okay. That would include the facility that Becker's using, the dental, and counseling, I believe you talked about originally. Counseling is currently in the, in the parole center, and that's about 4,500 square feet. So we're still coming in with enough square footage with that first floor. And as you two pointed out, the colleges that have done this have been very successful in marketing to their future potential students of a healthcare program when students come on campus. I would prefer that you two have a chat with these architects to build on your idea and explain to them more thoroughly, because this has gone far afield.
Well, and I will say that when you say you want healthcare and people to get their services and healthcare there, for me, healthcare is all of our health science programs because we have respiratory care, nursing, physical therapy, occupational, that, I'm just saying, that's what we have. And so that's what I think of when you say you want all of healthcare in one space. I don't see counseling as healthcare, to be honest. So, I'm, I, I, you know, I mean, we can look at that and, and have the architects come back and, and look at the three areas, is that what we're saying? Counseling and advising and coaching, and who else is out there that's doing that?
Becker's program.
Right, I got Becker.
We've got the dental hygiene, and we see what goes from counseling.
Right.
Yeah, I never got into the whole respiratory thing and all that stuff. It wasn't any of that at all.
Okay.
Our social workers act as the mental health counseling
Right, we've got them in the family life center for just that point.
In the family life center, correct.
Right. To take care of our people there.
Is there anything else from the architects today on this issue?
Well, I mean, I guess that we'll ask them to look at what, maybe we should ask them, Wendy, can you give me that information from that college again, that you went to the presentation? And then we can give that to them and see what they could do with this Durham building. Okay, I think that's the best thing.
Thank you, architects.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous business, board-generated ideas, are there any board-generated ideas this Seen none, closed session. Is there a reason for going to close session this evening?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we go into, excuse me, a closed session to consider material exempt from disclosure by state law, specifically an attorney's written opinion on a matter that is privileged.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? We'll all call a vote. Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We're going into closed session. We will, Jordan, do we have a room where the board can go to? Okay. So we'll be back and reconvene after we've had a chat. Thank you. Thank you.
The meeting is back in session from closed session. The Board will have a motion to be made and an announcement. So, Mr. Freeman?
MCC employee, MCC employees, students and friends. It's with a heavy heart that this evening the Board of Trustees has been presented with an agreement for Community College President Dr. Beverly Walker-Grofia. We appreciate her tenures of service to the college and this community. During her successful tenure she has weathered the Flint Water Crisis, COVID-19 pandemic, and the aftermath of decline in enrollment and revenue. Through all the challenges she has faced, she has led Mott Community College with grace, competence, and determination. The Mott Community College Board of Trustees acknowledges Dr. Walker-Grofia's service of excellence as she retires from MCC's presidency and honors her with the title of President Emeritus. We wish her well as she continues her passion to make a difference for all students through earning the college credential. If this agreement is approved, her last official day on the campus will be May 24, 2024, and a celebration of her achievements will be announced at a later date. Thereby, I make the motion to approve the resignation and retirement agreement between the Board of Trustees of Mott Community College and Dr. Beverly Walker-Grofia.
I second.
We have a motion. Is there any discussion? Mr. Reyes.
I want to thank Dr. Beverly for your years of service, your vision, and your immense efforts to make Mott a more welcoming place for all our community. It has been my absolute pleasure to work with you.
Mr. Freeman?
That was probably the hardest motion in thirteen years that I've had to make. You know, I was here at the very beginning when Dr. Beverly in this very room was being[1340.62][1340.62]interviewed, and she blew us away with her, just everything about her. Her compassion, her caring, everything came through. I remember going to your college, your former college in Maryland, and the funniest thing was when we were talking to the head of the Faculty Union, he's like, "You're not supposed to say this, but she does a really great job with us. We trust her inherently." And that was at that site visit, that's when I knew we had someone who would carry on the legacy of this college and do such amazing work. And she, she's a machine. She just works and has high expectations, and she wants the best because she knows at the end of the day our students benefit. And, and she's making an indelible impact on their lives. So I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for the college, that you have our love and support of the entire campus as well. I know this news is going to be as hard on a lot of people than it was for, you know, certain of us, and so I just want to say thank you very much.
Are there any comments from the Board before we vote?
Yeah, I would like to say something. Dr. Beverly, I haven't been on the Board very long, but I do wish you well, and I want to thank you for always asking about my husband with this journey.
Are there any other comments? Yes, Mr. Swanson?
Dr. Beverly, as Wendy said, I haven't been a Board Member for very long, and, you know, I wish you well and thank you for your service, and about it.
Sue, do you have any comment?
Well, I'd like to wish her well, and may God be with you whenever you go to him.
Good luck in all your future endeavors. Jordan, would you like to reread the motion?
Trustee Freeman, can you restate the motion? I have motion to approve the resignation and retirement agreement. And then could you complete the motion itself?
Michael, he wants you to restate the motion.
Yeah, it was to approve the resignation and retirement agreement between the Board of Trustees of Mott Community College and Dr. Beverly Walker-Grofia.
Trustee Reyes seconded the motion.
Roll call vote. Mr. Reyes?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Couch?
Yes.
Yes.
And mine is yes. The acceptance of Dr. Grofia's resignation has been, and retirement has been accepted. The Board of Trustees will be undertaking the task of appointing an interim president and will also begin the process of locating and hiring the eighth president of Mott Community College. Next business, ad hoc committee to begin the process of appointing an intern and hiring a new president. I'd like to appoint John Daly, Jeff Swanson, and myself. Okay. Other, just so there's a roll call, is there a second to that? Or, I can make the appointment, but I just want to make sure you guys are all comfortable. Comments from the Board members. Mr. Freeman?
Back to that, you have the right to appoint, and you've asserted that right, but I think the visual of it is three white males taking the lead on this when we do have other demographics that are represented here, and any of which would have done, would do a great job.
Thank you for your input.
We need to have a motion to establish the committee.
Okay. I need a motion to establish that committee.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
I, I agree with trustee Reyes. I think that, and I think this is a little premature right now, too, given where we're at. I think it's actually kind of rude. So I think that, that's something that should be really a little bit more, we should have more discussion on this, and, you know, I, I was involved with the entire process the last time, and I don't think anybody who is on this committee has any experience with it either. But I'm not saying that I want to be on it, but I just think it's premature and it requires discussion on what the entire process looks like.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor for a roll call vote signify by saying yea or nay.
Yea.
Nay. Michael?
Nay.
Art? Nay. Wendy?
I just want to ask, did anybody else want to be on that as far as like when you said?
You can have three people.
Okay. You said Dr. Daly is one of them?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Jeff?
Yea.
And myself is yes. The committee has been formed. Are there any further comments from the Board members this evening? Jeff? Wendy? Art? Michael? Sue? Thank you for coming this evening. The meeting is ended.